You will be shut off. If you would like to speak, raise your hand, please give me your name and address and we will call on you during the appropriate times. Thank you. And lastly, join me. I apologize that approval of the agenda. I have to add something, so. We have, we talked about an approval of a rectoractor a month ago. We had said yes. That person had a counteroff from their present employer and regretfully had to decline our position. So we have interviewed another and we are very pleased that they have accepted. And so I need to add their firing to the agenda. So I move to add to the agenda under appointments and resignations nine point four, the appointment of Jacob Flitt as recreation director. And saying that, would you approve the agenda with the addition? And it's presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Let me prepare your understanding. Who have the minutes? To make a motion to approve the. Your regular board assignment minutes for March nineteenth point twenty-four. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Both boards are thinking. Audience, citizen, anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Yes? And, and, right?
It's under. Respondence.
Okay.
You don't usually discuss that, so they can make it that now.
Yes.
And. In your packet, there were several articles about a meeting. A hearing or a. Of the minutes. So I knew. I intended that leaving. And. This is, I'm too proud that they didn't have that. This is the. Map. And it also identifies the sign. From which they got a grant. And will be in its development. And, and they've done a wonderful job and it would be a great prototype for the Arizona trip. Because they really put up a lot of work into it. So I have two copies of this. For the. For the result. And I also got two green white maps.
Thank you.
There was one. I, I know many of the people. And there was one that's several known. Because they, not in their. That they claim working is not relevant.
We've been told by. When we tried to. That we were stepping way beyond our bounds. And we were screwed.
Yeah, yeah. That's what the other man. This is the part. In there.
The part where?
In the middle. Like between. Lakefront and help her and. A river.
They can give us clear direction.
What did he? What she said was, we got scolded a little bit because we don't maintain the hot river trail on portion within the town of Columbia. Thank you, Anne, for bringing that to our attention. Uh, anybody else, audience citizen? Thank you. Okay, all business. Uh, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget discussion on amendments that propose a budget. So we're, we're visiting this because BiPAC in their meeting last week. Didn't. Agree with the budget proposals that the board of selectmen gave forth on our end of it and the board and the board of education on their end of it. They have asked us to cut. Or find ways to reduce ours by seventy-five thousand dollars. They, I could call it, they asked the board of education to cut up their budget by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So. We have found a way to eliminate seventy-five thousand from the board of selectmen. They asked it to come out of operating. I have to tell you that when I looked at operating, it was nickels and dimes and there was no way I was going to get to the seventy-five thousand dollars without hurting. Pay, cola. And we already. Hope that they love working here. So we try to treat them fairly, but they could go elsewhere and make more money, but we might have a good community, a good town and treat them fairly. And I wasn't about to ask to them to take a proposed lesser over than we had discussed. So that's number one. So we found ways to return money from our budget capital back to the general fund. Which would give them the seventy-five thousand dollars on our side where they could use it to offset the mill rate should they choose to do that. Um, and those items are listed here. There was a closeout of Penguin Drainage. It's been on there for a long time. I, I, Mark and myself talked to Department of Public Works and they said, you know what, there's really, there's nothing that they can do right now. They don't see anything in the, in the next year or two. Something may come up way down the road, but there's forty-seven, eight fifty-seven that they could return to that general fund. Uh, Latham Hill Bridge, fifteen thousand dollars. It was scheduled for an evaluation. That is not a dire need. That area, we have other places that are in, in more priority on the list of evaluation and work to be done should we choose to do so. And at a higher cost. And the other twelve thousand, one forty-three, Beth Wong said she could take that from the tree trimming. Because they haven't used this year's money from tree trimming. The weather has put a damper on that, so they're going to carry over about seventy thousand. But they're working off another seventy thousand now until July first. And we think that's gonna give her a cushion to be able to use the seventy-five thousand. Little she has plus another sixty-seven, five or whatever we're gonna give her for next year. So if you agree to that. Uh, we thought about taking it out of the chip seal overlayment for paving. And she chose out of the trees. We've done a pretty good job and everso works very well with us. Not great, but well with us, so we're, we're doing the best we can here. So all in all, it is our position that we tell BiPAC out of operating. I, I can't do it, I'm not doing it. I can't find the nickels and dimes to make up seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, and I would tell you, Beth. We worked hard with Beth too and, you know, she looked at me like, where are you getting it? So we found this solution for their money. We get it, we're gonna propose this to them tomorrow night. So. I ask that you support this. I move to approve the revised fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget with a seventy-five thousand dollar reduction. To the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five town capital plan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Columbia Lake revised, uh, next up is Columbia Lake revised town warrants and update, the next vacuum plan. Okay, so this has been in the work for too long. But that's a good thing because we're gonna get it right. And I read through this today. Um, I have a couple of questions. I'm gonna see a couple of people here that represented group side, we can give that. Okay. The first one is the Article Two, uh, vessels on Columbia Lake Town Ordinance. Well, so first one in here. Um, let's see, Town of Columbia, Article Two. Be the first group that comes up, I mean, the page number one, okay. You know. So I went through this and it all went good. A lot of this stuff is taken, I believe, right from the state. DEP or DEP guidelines. So we mirror them on a lot of the issues. Um, their definitions, what they allow. And they talk to our group extensively on. How to word it, so we still follow the state's guidelines, but we can gear it toward our lake, Columbia Lake, and how we can minimize. It's a small lake, relatively small, two hundred and fifty acres rounded up down. But the state's working with large bodies of water, bigger lakes. But their guidelines are very good. And they allowed us to. Use those guidelines, but also tailwind them to what we would. Reasonably allow and want for the Columbia Lake. So. One of the things, one of the questions I had though, we talked about. Penalty for offenses, that's on page six. I was, I was very happy with. With pretty much all. Page six, you talked about the one ninety dash seven penalty for offenses. Is there an appeal process, you mean?
There, there is an appeal process, not in the statute, I mean, not in the ordinance, but there are appeals for any ordinance of the town that has to find. Uh, that, uh, somebody wishes to appeal. And so between the state statutes and, and the ordinance, there would be appeal opportunities for anybody who tried it.
And where does that appeal process begin and end?
Uh, I can't go through a chapter and, and.
What I wanted to tell me is, do they appeal before this board here?
No. Uh, they wouldn't, uh, take it to, uh.
City Hall or agency, is that?
Well, there is an appeal law. And, but there is also a court operating. So, uh, it, it, um. It would not be before the board of selectmen, except potentially in situations in here where it gives authority for the board of selectmen to make certain decisions. The board, the board may determine that in the process of that decision you're making, uh, that there can be an appeal back to the board before they go somewhere else if they wanted.
Okay. Anybody else in this part?
I have two.
Lisa, thank you.
When I was, I had one on one ninety dash five A. It says unless vessel is owned by resident. Does anybody have a lease though?
Not that we're aware of, but that is a.
I'm just totally ignorant and it's like, well, doesn't anybody have a lease about for somewhere or something, or rent boat from a friend or from a marina or?
There aren't both rental services. Uh, that I'm aware of, but we, we have.
You gotta laugh, I don't know. So that was just, that was a question. Not saying I have an opinion either way. Um, and then also you have two points where you. You recognize, you noted her post and exemption sticker for section one ninety dash I. Well, isn't it one ninety dash five I? And then square root of. Oh, I'm sorry, page four, it's on the bottom of page four and again on the top of page five. Under F and D. Well, the site one ninety dash I, and I think one ninety dash five I.
Right.
Thank you. I know what you say, I'm like, where are they talking this from? That was the only reason I was trying to go through the citation. But it was all I had.
The, um. Rental thing, um. Leasing and if they're leased financing, it would be considered a similar to ownership, but we do have a provision in here now that seeks to eliminate commercial. Uh, boating facilities on, on, on the lake. And so casually renting a boat, we don't want people with boats setting up a delivery service on, on the lake. So, um, it is a good point to talk about ownership, but I, I think that there's strong reason to maintain it as ownership as opposed to allowing your, uh. Leasing or renting a boat to bring it on the lake for a short, on a short term basis. Or to allow a boat to be, who was already on the lake to be leased to somebody else.
Is that a flight to like canoes and stuff or is that just a little? I, I don't remember. It's hanging this. So I mean, if my brother wants to let me a canoe for the day?
We should, well, we will, I, I think it's a good point made and I do think it's reasonable to limit it to motorboats. Because in the past, that's what it's been limited to because there's no longer the cottage rental market that used to be on the lake. But when there was cottage rental, rental market, it usually came with a rowboat or canoe or something like that. And we wouldn't have that be considered to be good for the U C there. So I think the point's well taken if the rest of the selectmen were to, to agree with that and move this forward tonight, we would. Uh, change that to just the five motorboat.
I can see that.
Lisa, where are you looking at? I just wanted to read it through in my head so I can.
Um, it's page three, bottom of the page, number eight.
I mean, I'm, I used to get from somewhere.
One ninety dash five limitation used at Columbia Lake, one ninety dash five.
Okay. I skipped through.
It's always a lot of that where it's about for removal or commercial use rather than say any vessel, it would say any motorboat.
When somebody is penalized for something, what if they, if they don't pay the fees perhaps?
It's the same as, uh, under, and I can't tell you the answer to that, it would be, it would be the same as under state law or any other town ordinance where somebody didn't. Uh, pay the, the fee, there, there's, uh. Likely a process for, um. Having intent like they.
Which means nothing.
It's hard.
Means nothing. Means if they don't pay, they don't pay. Sixty-four. We could launch, what? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I think one thing in the motorboat area and, but again, I would have the resources to be sure. Uh, every time you register, re-register your boat, it says you've got to be in compliance with all laws and. Uh, you can't have any state fines outstanding and I'm assuming that, uh, it's kind of a follow-up to that. So you might not be able to register your boat again here, uh, until you're paid.
So it was registered with the state, so then they would have to know if there was some kind of.
Right, we would have to record that and, and then without the proper registration, they wouldn't be able to go back on the lake or any other body.
Okay, I have another one on page, on page five. It's the top, it's actually the paragraph H, but it is the top one. The H is on the bottom of four, we go to five. Let's, let's. Any vessel exceeding twenty-six feet length is listed on its original title. Is prohibited to launch on the lake. Vessels exceeding the twenty-six feet limit. Prior to November second, twenty twenty-three, must possess a valid posted exemption sticker per section one ninety dash I.
It would be dash five.
Okay, dash five. The number is not my concern. My concern is, did we have any vessel on the lake over twenty-six foot long last year that had an exemption sticker on it?
Not last year, this is still going forward. And so this would be, this is basically the grandfathering clause that, uh, we talked about in, in the fall. We had prepared one that was more elaborate than is here. Uh, we talked to the DEP or DEV and they wish to have it modeled that after what they had worked out for Candlewood Lake. And that is the process right here is what worked out for Candlewood Lake. So if there is a boat, or I believe there may be one, uh, that was over that length, they would come and get, uh, and show, uh, the board of selectmen. That yes, it was on the lake, yes, it's still the same owner and we would, you would approve, uh, the placement of a, of a simple sticker. Uh, on the boat, in the boat area, uh, saying the boat was exempt from that requirement.
Okay, so they would get a valid posted exemption sticker going forward. Forward, yes. Wasn't clear. Um, now that I read it, when you say that, I understand.
So how do we, how do people know, this gets given to people, they have to look it up, I'm just guidelines, how do they know what the guidelines are?
It is provided. And perhaps one of the other ordinance, if not this one, that every time the boat is inspected at the beach or inverted in the lake, that they will get a copy of our ordinances. Now, that won't apply to kayaks, sailboats or whatever, but it will be posted on the bulletin board. Uh, that's down at, at the lake and I'm sure that the Lake Association will make them available for, uh, people. And, uh, it's probably advisable and O M A C will probably, uh, look at this and talk to you, but to put together another flyer, uh, that was available on the. Bulletin board out here for people to just pick up if they wanted to contain the wave ordinance. While we were just brought up.
I would suggest, because it is the day of them, you are supposed to bring it to, on your phone. You're easy to answer.
Well, I, I will admit, I went through these very quickly. I did read them, but not being the person I used to be here. Is there anywhere on here that governs that they have to be inspected before they go into the water?
Yes, that's a different, uh.
That's coming up?
Yeah, that's one of the others, maybe part of the order.
Thank you. Because I didn't see the first two, I'm just, all right. So we're gonna make changes on the one ninety dash. Uh, it's gonna be one ninety dash five. Uh, all everywhere that, that did.
Actually, there's more on the second. It's so gentle again.
Thank you. Uh, under the definition vessel for commercial use, we're gonna change, uh, that's all the motorboat.
Anybody else here on this one? Good, okay, the next one. Uh, state regulations that Columbia Lake. Am I right? One ninety dash twelve regulation of Columbia Lake, on Columbia Lake. What's the penalty if they decide to be out there on a Sunday night at one o'clock in the morning and having party?
It's the same that we just talked over, it could be a hundred dollar fine. And, uh, if it. Every repeated, uh, violation, uh, that it seems to show a reckless disregard to the ordinance, that it can be, uh, the selectman can determine that they. Who's the right to have the boat on the lake for up to a year? The operator.
The operator.
The operator, yes, exactly, not the boat, the operator.
The boat can stay with the operator, go?
Yeah.
Do we have both, it's okay to pull three water skiers at one time?
That was a recommended, uh, pain. We had previously had just two. Uh, the state allows for, uh, three and the consensus of the people on that element was that, um. There was no reason at this point to stick with only specifying to.
Besides the lake safety concern, haven't?
Uh, there was original concern when it was two, uh, and there was, there was a. Significant amount of discussions and it wasn't, you know, but a consensus was developed. a significant amount of discussions and it wasn't, you know, but a consensus was developed.
Two be considered?
Yes. It is water skiing includes anything towed behind the boat, so it includes two. So it could be one rope and then three people riding on the two or three people on two tubes.
Uh any concern with one ninety dash one four restricted limited area? It says that we may establish on the waters in Columbia Lake areas restricted for the use of persons engaged in swimming and bathing to the use of motorboats and sailing vessels, to the use of vessels other than motorboats and sailing, and to the use of personally engaged in water skiing or any other recreational activity. The board shall shall cause distinctive marking devices uh to be placed in such positions that clearly delineate the boundaries.
That is correctly, that's our ordinance right now. The only thing that's been changed on that are our terms to line up with the D E P. Uh the board of selectmen has not used, utilized this ordinance uh for some period of time, but in essence, it also covers your creating the mooring field at the beach because the moorings are put out there and the mooring logs are put on and they carry certain destinations similarly with the no wake markers that are around the beach or uh the navigational aids for the the boat launch. Uh it covers that. It could be used more extensively, but at the date, there really hasn't been a need, but there may be going forward, so uh we have retained it.
And we have distinctive markers at the beach for this swimming area and at the early road for this swimming area. Both destroy equipment and more, so that would be covered.
Right, and that's also the markers on the aisle.
So uh, okay, so everybody knows that they can't put up, this is my, my area, stay out.
Correct. The selectmen at some future date could uh determine that something might be in order somewhere else, but there is no right for an individual to uh do anything other than put a buoy on uh their mooring that's been approved by the the select, you know, the selectmen uh under the the docking and mooring uh seawall or guidelines.
Do we have individuals that kind of complaining complaints to the marine patrol? Just um, because they're the ones that's gonna be there all the time. Just wondering if they make form, like, there's a process to that.
There, the marine patrol has telephone numbers uh that have been accessible and so if someone sees something going on that thinks they should be called to the attention of the marine patrol, uh the marine patrol can contact that and we'll use the numbers posted to the beach too, to anybody at the beach that sees something or whatever thing, uh contact marine patrol or something around who is.
In addition, Judy, the Columbia Lake Association publishes and educates that if they see any issues or concerns, they're welcome to ask the Columbia Lake Association.
Um just for clarification, under the, the water jet pump device, I thought Steve mentioned it because of the the amount of depth required to operate that.
And?
They said we couldn't eliminate the actual.
We we eliminated by saying it cannot be launched on the water.
Oh, that's how you got it?
Yes.
Yeah. The personal water craft, any inboard less than fifteen feet internal combustion engine that's just empowered or electric system powering a water jet pump as the primary source of motor.
As a jet ski. They're like.
Oh, you're calling a water jet pump a jet ski?
The personal water craft is deep's definition for a jet ski.
So this is just deep's definition of a personal.
Correct. Any star definition is, we have to be consistent with.
Oh, that's.
That's not that. That yeah, a deep thing cannot be launched and that's how we could because of the state, that's how we do it.
For the benefit of uh the selectmen, uh that was the distinction that the two people from deep that uh discussed the situation with us uh that was the distinction. Deep controls operation of boats on the waters of the of the state, including Columbia. However, because we have no state public access, uh we can prohibit launching. And so that is the way to look to regulate uh how we make our smaller lake safer by uh having launching regulations as opposed to operating regulations.
Okay.
Because no enforcement over launch.
Uh I guess that's under one ninety dash one three uh paragraph Z. That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The lake is not big, it's a big enough, it's a circle. I don't know why we were even involved.
Because they're there.
Oh, Andrew.
Okay, anybody, anybody more questions on this portion? Find it at the town meeting. Inspection is required of any, at the location of any vessel that is on, okay? Any person allowed to launch a vessel into the lake from any location other than the boat launch. Where do we allow that?
Well, people uh orders around the lake can launch rowboats and kayaks and canoes off of their shoreline and that's a a a vessel. Uh I I I think you could probably also uh potentially uh some people I think want jetties down their ramp and other people may put a small rowboat in with a little fishing mortar on it or something like that, but those are the only kinds of, they're sailboats. A thunder might be launched from somebody's shoreline. But but all, all of those have to be inspected and that's our current law that has some pain. Uh we're just going to also tighten up the education on that and make sure uh refresh everybody's mind.
So hypothetically, uh somebody gets access to launch a boat. It's an honor, sis. What keeps them from launching a boat that hasn't been inspected and has not shown paperwork after uh after hours, if they've already, if they have an access or have been authorized to use it to launch one boat that's been inspected and paperwork is in and and then they decide after hours, launch another one.
There are separate from these ordinances inspection uh procedures that were adopted when we amended this ordinance a few years back to put this in. We kept those inspection procedures uh separate from the ordinance so that they could be tuned and uh adjusted by the board of selectmen without having to go through the ordinance process. So there is a document that governs inspection and govern what has been up until now, the passing out of keys and and other things for access. So it is that inspection document that we deal with uh uh the issue that you're talking about, Steve, and tomorrow night's uh L M A C meeting is gonna be looking at the the gate issue again and talking about it based on the requests of the selectmen. So there could be in the future some recommendations coming back to uh amend that inspection procedure, but that's not part of the ordinance other than the fact that the ordinance recognizes the inspection really.
Anyone else, honey? I move to schedule a public hearing concerning the case and the town ordinance for Article two vessels on Columbia Lake Town Order. On Columbia Lake Town Ordinance, Article three, safety regulations on Columbia Lake and Article four, conduct at the town beach as presented. As presented, on April sixteen twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M. Discussion, I I I'm ready. First of all, your meeting tomorrow night. We asked you to look at the key issue. The board of selectmen are firm. We do not want to have the pony up quarter of a million dollars to keep the lake clean. Okay, I'm just telling you how it is. We don't want that to happen. I have heard members of the board say no access unless that something comes through designated time. But I will tell you, tomorrow night, there will probably be some heated discussion from people who want to be there off hours and look at these things. They use the lake in a different way. Be aware of that. I have already asked Mark in our uh town maintainer to look at more uh more camera coverage at the launch and better cameras at the launch. I wish this had more tea, I wished we had more teeth to do what is right. You put a boat in after hours, I'd love to be able, and you're wrong, I'd love to be able to hook it up and tow it off to there after hours. I don't care. But I don't have that luxury. People on the lake who use the lake, people who live in town who use the lake, everybody's responsibility is to do the best for that lake. Because it's a beautiful lake, a lot of people enjoy the lake, they love the lake, you have property on the lake. People hear things, people lose lose lives, you know, sink ships. I've heard it my whole life being in the Navy, but I gotta tell you, nobody is perfect down there, nobody. We all have to do this. So tomorrow night, when you have that meeting, be prepared. I like all these, I do. I I feel what you're trying to do, so that's my two cents before we go to a vote. Anybody else?
Some of the penalties and whether there's due process and enforcement, but for the purposes of how me, I'll support this, but I do have a revision of what that excitement, we're seeing legal problems down the road here.
The more discussion. All the, all in favor of moving this to a public hearing? All right. Opposed, none. So we're. L M A C, thank you.
Thank you.
Stand by. New business, right? Moving there? No. What do we add seven what? For the hiring? Approved to use the balance of the brand account. Okay, we're looking for, we're trying to do things, we need new dugouts, dugouts up at the field, there's some stuff that needs to be done. We're looking at how to spend our money wisely. The Grant family generously gave us a lot of money years ago. We have a new field for it, the girls softball field and some different things. There's a little bit more money left and uh I move to approve using the balance of the grand fund for the replacement of the dugout at the pony field as well as baseball field upgrades at the rec park upper field, also known as the pony league field. There's about a twelve thousand dollar balance in there and you'd probably use all of it. Any discussion?
I think it's what it was meant to.
Yeah, so that's the regulations, it's supposed to.
All right, all right.
Recreation.
All those in favor? Opposed, thank you. I move to adopt the amendment of memorandum of agreement between the state and the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security in the town of Columbia. This is an annual, we vote for this, it's to give us grant money, so we have our emergency manager, management person, we get to use that and help pay for their position. Some equipment. Any discussion? All those in favor? I move to approve Peg Thoreya's request and donation of a memorial bench uh for Peter and Gertrude Newman placed in the agreed upon designated area on the lawn facing the lake at the Murphy House. Uh Pete was current public works director for many, many years. Um listen, I love these benches. Sometimes people read them and go, who, who's that? They get passed on, so I'm all in favor of this. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Vote, thank you. Columbia Lions, yeah? Columbia Lions seeking permission to update landscaping lighting around the town green gazebo and around the town green sign. It's tonight. Representing Lions Club.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Matt Stern at forty-seven one zero. I'm the current president of the Columbia Lion Club. I'd have to be that. Uh and it's a tradition in our club, every sitting president has a president's project that they should initiate throughout the year for the veteran of the town. And so I come today to uh request uh and I have a our local expert here, uh that's gonna do most of the work uh of improving the landscaping around the gazebo, uh upgrading that piece of it and also adding lights to the new town sign and some groundwork around that as well. And and bring Jim Blair here, he's also a Columbia Lion. We have a lot of history with the with the gazebo and the town green and with the town itself, with building the gazebo as a lion's project in the past. We have done landscaping before, we maintained it every year as a service project, cleaned everything up and the lights for the. We have done landscaping before. We maintain it every year as a service project, clean everything up and the lights for the holiday season. So it's an important part of the town and more to us. So that's uh something that we'd like to recommend that we do. And if you want details of what we will do, Jim Blair, Jim Blair landscaping, also Columbia Lion, can you add to the stuff here?
Thank you. So just you're going to appoint floodlights or low level floodlights at the the uh mezzanine board out there?
Yeah, so uh Jim Blair, seventeen Columbia landing. Um, basically just some uh lights that are like a walk. We get him, you know, right on the sign and I'll pick the right beam spread so that you're just lighting up the side and not causing any you know, one, you know, light pollution or what have you. And uh since it's illuminated at night to give that extra feature, we already have uh based on other lines project. Uh, we have uh lighting and a transformer that's present at Light State gazebo in the evening actually lights the uh well, yeah, that and the uh there's fireman's memorial is lit at night. And uh so that's all set upon timer though. That's capable of handling a few additional light. And the other thing that we propose to do is there's the bronze plaque. And I meant to get over there today and see exactly what that is about, but it's a famous historical sign. And I would also try to get a little light on that again.
The blue one?
Yeah, it's kind of like
Oh, it's, you know, you're gonna ask if you could actually, first of all, we need to contact the state. It needs to be repainted or whatever.
Might even move that.
Okay, so I mean, I could light it for now and I would have moved, I could move the light.
Okay. I don't know if I'm watching or drawing attention to it. It's actually very bad. You can't read it. The blue is faded and
Needs to be totally red.
So we'll table that one for now. But we could, we can possibly do it.
But lighting it is
It would be nice if it's moved into more uh
Needs to move.
Yeah.
Nice eagle.
It could be the restoration of it. Yeah, it could be a great eagle project.
Just spray, do it blue and then take some sort of roller and just lightly go over the raid letters or something. I don't know.
I can help with that.
From theirs and I got information from them.
And I know and I know historian doesn't like the color Lebanon for their restoration, that the blue was wrong. It hurt.
So should we pass that, we're the charge sponsor of the scouts in town. Could we pass that information along to scout leader and perhaps plant the seed and they can contact someone on the board of selectmen or the town manager?
Yes, if you have somebody who's a life scout who needs an eagle project, let's not go back six years ago. I'm just saying, I just know
No, it's good. We could, we could pass the information along and say, hey, this is uh one of those areas, cause they aren't supposed to discover the areas on their own, but if there's things that can be pointed out, we can point out.
Question. Uh Lisa, maybe no answer to him. I know the lead wrapping around the cement poster holding that sign has disintegrated. It's all falling off. So I I've seen other towns that have given up on the cement lead wrap and encased that historical sign in timber painted white. So that that's another part of the
Right.
I know.
So uh, yes, Hannah, sorry, we were going
I I have a question about the direction of light. Um, lights that are pointed upward of uh are not good for wild loving and um and bird migration.
Right.
And would it be possible to have down or
The way the sign is constructed, um, I can look at that, but that's I don't want to imbue the integrity of that sign and the lights will be shining onto the sign as much as possible. Again, I can adjust beam spread to get it so that it does just illuminate the sign that we don't have errant light.
If you look at our war memorial, those that has lighting on.
Very similar.
On the one more, it doesn't go very far above the one more.
Uh, thank you very much. Do we, do we need, we don't need a motion for that? Yeah, okay. But before we do, uh, I happened to see the governor a month ago and I was looking to get help for our culvers and everything else. And I said, even ever the first election in Columbia, oh, I love that parade. Parade. I lost him right there. What I thought of was like, you know, kind of go with a parade. So I just wanted you to know the governor is a real fan of the parade, so.
Here with Bruce Chau, at the fourth, no, Labor Day one time. He he was singing with Patrick.
Maybe I'll bring that up for the live it up. Okay, um, so I make a motion to be allowed the Columbia Lions Club to update the landscape and lighting around the town green gazebo in the town green sign. More discussion? None? All those in favor? Thank you. We appreciate all you did. Nothing on Columbia Lake? appointments and resignations? Uh, I move to remove Kyle Pelletier from the six month probation and place him at a full time employee. Does a great job. Good kid. We don't want to lose him. Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, opposed? Thank you. Resignation of Brandon McLean on the Hot River Mills Preserve Committee. Um, sorry to hear that, but I move to appoint Guy Renninger on the Hot River Preserve Committee. Guy is already on the H VAC committee and uh join the Hot River Preserve Committee. So any discussion? All those in favor? And nine point four, the appointment of Jacob Flit, Recreation Director. Um, you know, Mark and Jen, if there are few Jason. Excuse me, Jacob. And then I I watched it and in the beginning he was you know, okay, he was good and everything. And then then he asked some some real pointed questions. You know, what are you looking to do? And his experience just came out. I was very pleased with his answers. He helped run uh camping camps in the summertime. He did a lot for other communities. So I'm very pleased that he stepped up. We made him an offer and he accepted. So I move to appoint Jacob Flit Recreation Director, new hire, starting the fifteenth of April. Should be fast. You know what I wanted because of this lake, I wanted to bring his resignation. Oh, I had it one week off. Okay, you started one? Okay, so I would go. Uh, you know, I I I'm sorry, I don't have his resume. We have a, yeah.
Just so you know, he's a presently employed in West Harper School System. Um, and he's a head coach for baseball out in in class or something.
But you made an offer up there. We have, before we prove I'm gonna say, yes, I'm sorry. My mother, you know, just keep already, you know, well, you know, I it was because we wanted to move quickly on this, made him an offer to see what he would accept. I didn't want to bring it as a hire if he didn't accept the offer.
So, and there's another reason. He already had a scheduled vacation. We wanted to get him in to start setting up for the full lake season. Then he's going on vacation. It's unpaid vacation. So we made that decision.
Yeah. I I know. Very relative minor uh quest.
Judy, one, please.
I'll read it for him or just kind of go over some highlights. He's a high school varsity basketball coach at the Usiponic Valley Regional High School. Uh, he's uh had been basketball freshman team, varsity boys varsity team program assistant in campus parks and recreation for five years. Develop camp programs. Let's see, supervisor for Usiponic Recreation Basketball, Summer Camp Director, East Winter Parks and Recreations. Uh, head coach instructed skills and drills for a basketball camp.
So hopefully some of the things he's done, working, working on last year's and fill assignments.
Uh, why do you need his previous?
He hasn't been up here.
Well, he's, he wants
He will, he will.
Yes, and you why?
Even right now while he's doing uh night school, if he's a parent professor, that, so this is looks like a parent.
And he's very excited. This is exactly what he's looking for. So, good thing.
The trouble too is voted down. All those in favor? Town administrator, nothing?
No, I have um, just a resident brought to my attention, there's a favorable vote from the planning and development committee of the state about a uh a bill that they hope to authorize municipalities to levy levy a tax on short term rental facilitators in the amount not to exceed two percent of the operator's income for short term rental properties during the tax year. This authorizing municipality to engage consultants and assist in developing ordinances and regulations concerning operating and use of short term rentals. What's happening around the country is B and Bs used to be always family owned and low key, uh corporations are starting to buy up B and Bs and starting to make it into a serious industry. But what's happening in different states is they're being abused and a massive party for some type of happening, B and Bs right in the middle of the neighborhood. Where all of a sudden you'll have sixty cars coming out of nowhere and the B and B gets destroyed and the police are complaining. So they're, they're trying to get their hands around this and this is a piece of legislation that uh just hit. I just want to make everybody aware. It's not so much a nature unless, you know, a home were used as a rental place and became a party back up. Um, which could create a, if it was
It's a very, so instead of just the rest of the people that are probably in a will point, have to
Well, I, I think that is more in the shoreline areas where where the B and Bs are competing with. No, it's optimal to the path. But I just wanted you to be aware of this.
Tax that'll be
An optional dismissal tax. It could be used to try to get this industry on the table. But I I don't think it applies so much to Columbia, but wanted you just to know it's out there. It's making the rounds. Also had um a nice letter from one of our residents. He wanted to thank the elk officer to help resolve a wild animal issue. Uh, the resident is Paul Manacarella. Uh, he contacted me and I gave him guidance. I had to get a hold of animal control. Um, and Michael Zacky, our lead elk officer, did respond. Uh, there was a raccoon with just a stumper. Mike took care, took care of the raccoon. It's all good. No green children on. So all very exciting. And that's all I ask you.
There is a port finals. There is that uh bridge construction on Hot River Bridge, Hot River Road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, two million dollars to like in bridge to dirt roads and um Hot River Trail Alliance, like Ian talked about, nice article there. And we'll take a look at that port. No, that, you know, I I'm sorry, I take it personal when people say Columbia is not doing this, not doing that. I will tell you though, I've talked to our state congressman, Joe Courtney, met him down at the hot river at that bridge on the backside of the uh where the main buses were, it's before it comes over the river. And I, this is probably four years ago and and I was told we were on the slate for next year. And then it was next year and then it's next year. And that was twenty twenty-four and they're talking about next year.
Well, so only finally just went through.
Yeah.
It did. It was three, over three million to finish that project. Now it's
So we're actually gonna get that though? They're gonna open up that?
Well, it's one's a small, it's a small little like and flanders by
vehicle can get to there.
And also on the town administrator before, well, we just had in mind and you know, to talk about something like that. Oh, uh the D O T just got back to us. At least they got back to us about our concern over the S turned down by the lake. They apologize for taking so long. And uh it's now been reinteracted, yes. Can't say they're gonna solve it anytime soon, but at least they received it and they said it's good they're gonna study it. Thank you. And if you haven't been over to Hot Road, go over there and take a look. I think they're doing a pretty good job over here. If you just get a little bit less rain. Okay. Budget transferred, none. Refunds, I move to approve refund totaling a hundred fifty-nine dollars twenty-eight cents, one refund. Any discussion? All those in favor? And I approve paying the bill. I move to approve paying the bills totaling one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Insisting of um twenty twenty-four, twenty-four. Let's go with twenty-three, twenty-four emergency. Twenty-three, twenty-four regular credit card and paychecks. Ladies, Bethan?
None of them.
All those in favor of paying the bills? Vote, thank you. Are you a citizen? Mr. Randy, how are you?
Good, really.
I'm good. Everybody know Justin Randy? Justin Carter, zoning board? So just want to make sure I can select anything on my way to go to the proper place and the people that they need to
Start, send it my way. I had that discussion with people.
Uh, board member comment?
I have one on their tax and business incentive program. They had it broken down by how much they're spending, you know, the I'd like to see it fly. Like, regardless of how much you're putting in, everybody gets the same break over a certain amount. I mean, that because it's, I would think it's harder for the guy who's putting in twenty-five thousand dollars. He's probably saving money in doing that. It's a harder and you say it should be equitable. It shouldn't be correct.
Uh, regardless of that time on your agenda for the next fourth weapon is absolutely good. And I got input and not helping. Just recommended that the military have more.
I have a situation, we've contacted over the weekend by a senior who does not live on the lake. He has a canoe. He's, it is anything that he doesn't want to be uh having to cart back and forth to Columbia, um, to the boat launch. He's wants to know other than having a mooring if there's a way to keep it um at the beach.
We'll have the kayak rack. It's eighty, so that could be an issue, but
can you keep it on the kayak, Randy?
Well, those are um they're rented. We, this part of our lottery
Wait a minute.
We can find that place.
He has his own canoe, yeah. He's carting it back and forth and asks if there's a way for him to keep it there.
He does not live on the lake. He does not. We'll find a way. Okay.
Can you give me his contact information?
I will. Can you tell me about the Democratic here? When is that celebration?
That's April Sunday, I think it's eight twenty-four, twenty-eighth or earlier, yeah, Osborne at the wire.
Okay.
Some of them to eleven to two.
Good. Good too. So So, say that. No executive session, thank you. So uh I make a motion for adjournment at eight eleven, all those in favor? Uh, sign the bill and you will be done.